The time is 6:00 PM, so I would like to call to order the Norwood City School District Board of Education meeting. Today is Thursday, February 23rd, 2023. The Norwood City School District Board of Education follows a bi-monthly meeting schedule. The first meeting of the month is called our committee meeting. At this meeting, we fully discuss our agenda for the board meeting to be held the third Thursday of each month. As board members, we encourage you to attend, watch, and listen to our committee discussion resulting in action at the board meetings. For full disclosure, our committee meetings and board meetings are always announced, video and audio tapes, as well as posted to our webpage for your view. All of our meetings are public and visitors are welcome. This is Camp House. Would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Cole.
Present.
Mr. Taylor.
Present.
Mr. Atwood.
Present.
Ms. Ballard.
Present.
Mrs. Rarica, it looks like she's absent.
Okay, item 1.03 is the Pledge of Legions. If everyone would please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Item 1.04 tonight is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt? The agenda is written?
All motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica. Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
And Mrs. Cole.
Yes. All right, items 1.05, these are the minutes from the regular meeting, January 19th. 1.06, this is the minutes from the finance meeting held February 3rd. 1.07 minutes from the committee meeting, February 7th. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes listed in 1.05 through 1.07?
All motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes. Okay, with that in effect, we will move on to item two. Item two is our presentations, 2.01 Rising Stars. So at this time, I'll be turning it over to Mrs. Chesson and Ms. Havlin.
Thank you, President Cole. We are pleased to present to you tonight the Rising Stars for the month of February. Rising Star students, when I call your name, please come forward. And Mr. Taylor is going to present a certificate to you. We're going to say some great things about you. Want me to stand up here so we can acknowledge everything you've done so far? We're going to start out with Sharpsburg Elementary and Primary Schools. Rising Star student for February is Sadie McGuffin. We are proud to announce Sadie McGuffin as this month's Rising Star student. Sadie is a first grader who is eager to learn, and she comes to school ready to give her best every day. She is a model PACS leader who is an integral component of our calm and peaceful learning environment. Sadie fully engages and participates in all academics activities at school and at home. And her strong work ethic and unbridled enthusiasm about learning have resulted in incredible growth. Sadie is a sweet soul who shows empathy and encourages others to be kind and to work hard. Her favorite subjects are art, music, and writing, and she works diligently on all of those. Sadie thinks Sharpsburg Primary is great because her teachers are nice and they keep her safe. And because everyone cares about her. When Sadie grows up, she wants to be a hair designer, a dancer, a zookeeper, and a vet. We think Sadie is amazing because she gives her best effort to learn and she cares deeply about others. Sadie's teachers truly enjoy growing with her each day as she sets a positive example for all those around her. It is for these reasons and more that we are thrilled to have Sadie represent Sharpsburg Primary as our Rising Star.
Norwood View Elementary School's Rising Star student for February is Kyla Cornet. Kyla is a straight A student who is very kind, hardworking, and can always be counted on to be a PACS leader. Her favorite subject is math, and she loves to actively participate in class and solve problems. She loves to learn and will give her best effort towards any academic challenge. However, her favorite thing to do is sing. Kyla really enjoys music. She has an excellent singing voice and has the charisma to go along with it. Kyla would like to go to college to study music to be a teacher and sing in choir as well. Congratulations, Kyla.
Williams Avenue Elementary Rising Star student is Janowa Thompson Hooks. We would like to recognize fifth grader Janowa Thompson Hooks as a Rising Star student for the month of February. Janowa is a student that every teacher is fortunate to have in class. Janowa is a tremendous student for several reasons. Janowa, first and foremost, is a tremendous worker. He's a very conscientious student that works hard every day. He is very polite when asking questions and is respectful of other students and staff at Williams Avenue Elementary. He participates in class and is learning new concepts quickly. He has proven himself to be a strong and dedicated student with an exceptional work ethic. Janowa enjoys many activities both indoors and outdoors. He has joined the Cub Scouts this year after a school visit from the local scoutmaster and has learned a great deal. Some of the many skills he has learned are how to safely start and extinguish a campfire, how to create different kinds of knots, and many other outdoor-related skills. Janowa has mentioned he would like one day to move to New York and work in the music or creative art field. He is also very interested in computer design. He's willing to put in the hard work and dedication it takes to get there. Williams Avenue Elementary is lucky to have Janowa as part of the community. Congratulations, Janowa.
The Norwood Montessori School's Rising Star student for February is Alora Yee. The Norwood Montessori, oh, I'm sorry. The Norwood Montessori School is proud of Alora as our Rising Star for the month of February. Alora's work ethic and kind heart can be seen throughout her day at the Norwood Montessori School. She enters the classroom, finds her workspace, chooses appropriate work, and gets down to business. Alora also is a living example of our Montessori peace promise as she takes care of herself, others, and our environment. Many days, you will find Alora working with the golden beads to build and combine numbers, language boxes, or farm, and geometric shapes with all with joy and determination. She is also thoughtful of others and will help whenever help is needed. We have enjoyed learning and growing with Alora in our classroom, and we love having her as part of our Montessori family. Congratulations.
Norwood Middle School's Rising Star student for February is Kylie Burns. Kylie Burns is an exemplar, seventh grade student at Norwood Middle School. She tries her hardest and keeps on top of all her assignments. When someone needs help, she is quick to do whatever she can for teachers and students alike. Best of all, she has a smile on her face that is known for her positive attitude, which improves every classroom that she is in. Kylie truly embodies what it means to be respectful, responsible, and ready here at Norwood Middle School. Congratulations, Kylie, on being the Norwood Middle School Rising Star of the Month.
Norwood High School's Rising Student, Rising Star student for February, excuse me, is Alan Nolasco De Leon. Norwood High School would like to recognize junior Alan Nolasco De Leon as our Rising Star for February. Alan is a true academic determined to succeed in all of his courses through hard work and perseverance. He is diligent and devoted student, making sure each assignment is completed to the fullest. He is conscientious and attentive to details. His current academic log contains four AP courses, chemistry, and an honors precalculus class. Alan has received straight As his entire high school career. While he is undecided about his future career, he would like to continue his education at the college level. Alan is positive and truly cares for his fellow students, always going the extra mile to help others. For these reasons, Norwood High School is honored to have Alan as our Rising Star. Congratulations.
We have one more Rising Star, and this is a Norwood staff Rising Star, Ann Jeanette Raines, and Mrs. Akers is going to say a few words about you, but Mrs. Raines, please come forward too.
You get to get it front and center.
Norwood High School would like to recognize Mrs. Ann Jeanette Raines for her hard work and dedication to the Norwood City Schools. Mrs. Raines is in her 10th year working for the district as an administrative assistant at the high school. Mrs. Raines has a calm demeanor that allows students and staff to always know that they can come to her. The administrative team has been strengthened by her contributions to our school. No task is too small or challenge too big for Mrs. Raines, and she treats each student as her own. Her ability to stay positive through even the most stressful circumstances makes her irreplaceable. Mrs. Raines has called Norwood her home since 2001 and has raised three Norwood graduates. Hunter, the class of 2017, Reagan, the class of 2018, and Dawson, the class of 2020. We are proud to call Ann Jeanette a part of our Norwood High family and can easily say that Norwood High School would not be the same without her. So thank you.
At this time, the board members, I'm sure are going to want to come up front and say congratulations and get a nice photo with all of you. Okay, we're going to do one group photo. Congratulations, Rising Stars. We invite all the Rising Star students and staff to go with their families in the lobby and follow Ms. Havlin, the lovely lady in red sweater over there. She's going to take some nice group photos with all of you. Thank you again, Rising Stars. You may go out to the lobby with your family. Okay, moving on in our agenda, item three is personnel. This is superintendent recommendations, so I'm going to turn the vote over to Superintendent Ronan.
Thank you, Madam President. 3.01 resignation, I hate to put in Morgan, but Morgan Love is resigning. She was a student assistant and a PTA officer, and she will definitely be missed. All right, then moving on to 3.02 employment. I would like to give a big Norwood welcome to our new football coach, Matthew Money, who is sitting right here. So welcome to Norwood. We're delighted that you're here. Under number two, we have supplemental contracts to some of our teaching staff. I definitely want to thank Jocelyn Gregory for organizing the DC trip for our middle school students. So thank you, Jocelyn. Number three, welcome to the Norwood family to two educational aides that we are hiring. So welcome to Jordan Richards here and Brandy Durden. Number four, avenues for success, Melissa Burns is going to be one of our teacher liaisons. And under number five, we have pupil activity contracts for our spring sports. And as you can see, there's a goodly number there, and also it appears that one of them is for our fall sports already that we're hiring. And then we have a change in status for two of our employees at the bottom of the page. And also, at the very top of the next page, another avenues for success site staff substitute. Now, in 3.04, we mentioned this at the committee meeting. This is a memorandum of understanding with the Norwood Teachers Association, and it's a retirement incentive. The language actually comes from the negotiations last summer. And it needed a few tweaks to the language because it was difficult to read. So we work with NTA on the slight language change because you all had approved it last summer. And the NTA ratified the changes last week, so we are bringing it forward for you to approve the few language tweaks that we made. So that's what 3.03 is. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent Ronan. I do see a voting box after 3.02. So do I have a motion to approve 3.01 and 3.02?
All motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? I will be abstaining from this vote. Mrs. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
And then item 3.03, this is the motion to approve the NTA memorandum of understanding. Do I have a motion to approve that?
All motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes. Okay, moving on, item four, this is the education committee report. Mrs. Rarica is not here, and I realize that I failed to check with somebody to see if we have a backup on this.
I'd be happy to read it.
Okay, all right, Ms. Ballard, I appreciate that.
No problem. First up is 4.01, the OHSAA membership resolution. This is the same thing that we do every year, Pinky. It should be the same old, same old. The contract is there if you'd like to reread it. 4.02 is the adoption of two new courses for our high school. And that one does not have, ah, the program of study is listed under 4.03. And that should list the new coursework, and it also gives a scheduling plan out as well. The 4.04 listed is our student field trips. We've got two requests from Norwood View going to Taft Theater and the Cincinnati Zoo, both for our second graders. And the Norwood High School is taking a trip over for Shepherd Chemical, 10th and 12th grade. Sharpsburg is going to the Cincinnati Museum Center for their first-grade field trip. And the Norwood High School Orchestra is looking to take a trip in 2024, Nashville, Tennessee for a competition. So they need to start planning now. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the education committee report 4.01 through 4.04 as presented.
I will second that.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes. Okay, moving on to number five, this is our policy committee report, and I will turn it over to Vice President Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. We have two policies this evening for their second readings. We have JFE, student pregnancy and related condition. The changes are based on guideline documents, or guidance documents for the rights and protections under law and to better reflect new federal rules written to ensure educational programming for the students who are affected by this policy. We also have KKA, recruiters in the schools. Once this policy was open, the language was also updated to more clearly match Ohio law. Biggest change is that in secondary schools, we must add student school email and phone to directory information and release that information to the military recruiters, except where parents have requested that it not be shared with recruiting recruitment officers. FERPA requires that we notify parents, and we do that notification through final forms. I can make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt these policies.
This is the second reading, correct?
Yes.
So it'd be a second reading and adoption.
Yes.
I'll second. Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes. Okay, moving on, item six, this is the building and grounds committee, and I will turn it over again to Ms. Ballard.
Thank you, Madam President. We have two usage requests for facilities. The first is for Norwood Recreation. They would like to use Shea Stadium for an Easter hunt, Easter egg hunt on April 8th between 8:00 and 12:00. And the second request is from the Girl Scouts of Western Ohio. They want to use the middle school parking lot for pickup and drop-off location during the summer, July 5th through the 7th, at 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM for their summer program. I'd like to make a motion that we approve both of those requests as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes. All right, item seven is executive session. Excuse me. In accordance with Ohio Revise Code 121.22G81, the information is directly related to a request for economic development assistance that is to be provided or administered under the statute set forth in RC 121.22G81 or involves public infrastructure improvements or the extension of utility services that are directly related to an economic development project. So I would like to motion that we enter into executive session.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes. Okay, with that, the time is 6:24, and we are in executive session. Okay, moving on in the agenda, item eight, this is the this is the finance committee report, and I will turn it over to our treasurer, Mrs. Camp House.
Thank you, Madam President. On the agenda, 8.02 is our appropriation resolution. 8.03, this is our certificate of substantial completion for Williams Elementary School. This starts the completion procedure for the renovation project at Williams. And it marks the end of that renovation project, of getting to the end of it. 8.04 donations, some very nice donations that we discussed last week at our committee meeting, including $100,000 from Shepherd Chemical for Norwood Ready Kids. 8.05, a new account, a Montessori PTO. This new PTO group will be running their fundraising through the district while they complete the process to become their own tax-exempt entity. 8.06, Ohio Attorney General's safety grant, $9,307 that was awarded to us a couple of weeks ago. 8.07, memorandum of understanding with Butler County ESC to provide special ed services for IEP to our students that qualify. 8.08, 8.09, to complete the financial process to zero out and close the cafeteria at Pennant, since Milford Schools are running our food service program. 8.10, to add to the scope at View Elementary. As we spoke last week, this is to add the retaining wall along Drex Avenue, which will make that area safer to maintain. 8.11, Sharpsburg Primary oozement. To allow the two churches behind the primary to use our parking lots and to allow Springdale Nazarene to modify seven feet of our lot to include additional parking for them and for us to use. 8.12, resolution disapproving the TIF school compensation agreement. The old quality insight is in the process of being considered for the economic development offering of a CRA and a TIF agreement by the city of Norwood. The district was approached in August of last year and was able to verbally agree to a financial terms for a school compensation agreement with the current owners of the old quality insight. Last month, the district received a formal request from the city of Norwood to negotiate a school compensation agreement, which gave us only 45 days to complete negotiations as per law. Even though all parties continued to support the verbal agreement from last summer, we were unable to agree to a small portion of language that the school district needs to see in order to protect future school district revenues. Tonight, I'm recommending that we disapprove the TIF school compensation agreements in order for us to have more time to continue negotiations in the best interest of the school district. We believe we can have an agreement in place to approve in our March board meeting. And then 8.13 is a Densmore agreement to appoint special counsel for all TIF-related matters and to complete a formal contract as such. And that is everything that I have for finding it. Any questions or comments on finding it?
It's like 8, 10, and 8, 11 have their own separate
Well, there's a number of voting boxes.
There's a number of voting boxes. I've moved that we can do 10 and 11 together and then do the rest.
Well, I mean, so
That way we can get to our approve basically one through 11 as one item. Yeah. I think there are only two or three under that. Three. But I moved that we take 8, 1 through 8, 11 as one voting box, and then we can deal with 12 and 13.
Okay, I can second. Any discussion on that? Are we able to do that? Okay.
So we're voting on amending the agenda?
So we're voting on amending the agenda?
Let's just ignore the voting box. I think I just have an extra one in there. 8.11, if you wanted to do a part of the agenda, you would make a motion in a second for 8.01 to 8.10.
Actually, 8.11.
Yeah, actually, there's one after 8.06.
There is.
Yeah. There isn't really, I'm sorry.
We were going to lump in one, one through 11, if that would just save us a little time.
Yeah.
But maybe not by
Yeah, I'm not
Right, guys, right.
Well, I mean, we have a motion in a second to just vote from 8.1 to 8.11.
11.
Yes.
All in favor? Let's do that way.
Yeah. All right, so Mrs. Camp House, can we, can we vote on that?
Yes, please. Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
All right, so I will motion that we approve finance items 8.01 through 8.11.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes. There, there is some, there's some things that we want to highlight here in this because there's a lot.
Yes, right, go ahead.
So the first thing, I just want to congratulate the Montessori School for forming their own PTO. That's a huge step forward. So big congratulations to those parents who were out there putting that together for those kiddos as that program continues to grow and expand. The donations, a huge thank you to Shepherd Chemical
Yes.
With $100,000 for the continuation to support Norwood Ready Kids. I mean, they've been doing this for so many years. That has to be well over a million dollars they give in this school district. I mean, so just every year, I mean, huge thank you.
They're terrific.
And then the other thing that I just think it's important to note here is 8.08 and 8.09, right? So we have to fiscally zero out this, this, this part in order to keep our books clean since we are no longer doing our own food since we are no longer doing our own food service. So in order to do that properly and per Ohio law, we have to change the transfer to an advance first, which is 8.08. And then once we change the transfer to an advance, then we can officially approve to move the money back to the general fund, which is 8.09, which is then having that advance moved back to the general fund. I know it's a little bit of complication there, but that is the way to properly do this. So that way we zero out that account and keep our books clean. 8.10, so the elementary, that's easing. 8.11, so the easement. So this is that section of the playground right next to the fence in that parking lot where you have a change in elevation. So what this does is changing the easement is going to allow the construction of bringing that over, that change in elevation closer to the school district side. So that way they can actually have parking spaces on both sides, on the church side. So it doubles the available parking spaces by doing this. So it makes sense.
In the original, I guess, the grounds design layout, that wall that was back there, they were putting some type of garden wall feature across the back. Is that still the plan? They're just extending it in so the playgrounds have
This was in the original plan to extend parking and then to have a wall with the planting and the trees and everything. So this was all included in the original plan.
Okay.
This is just details that we need to do to get it to work.
For the View project, I know that we're changing that wall as well for the property, for the safety on that steep hillside. Is, do we know yet, is the retaining wall just going to be a straight up and down? Or are we going to do kind of a stair step? Like, I mean, that could be another landscaping opportunity there.
It's not going to be a pretty wall like the one at Sharpsburg Primary. This is going to be more industrial. It's just going to be a short wall and then a space, a flat space, and then another short wall. And the reason it's going to be like that is it's less expensive than one great big wall. But if you think about it, the elevation change at Sharpsburg Primary is much, much smaller.
Correct.
And so we can just make that to have a nice little wall and then, you know, arc fence and a pretty little landscaping area. But at View, it's like 15 feet of land that needs to be controlled. So we're doing it more to save money. We're making it more utilitarian just to save money rather than pretty.
Okay.
Yeah, this is really a big safety factor. I mean, for the maintenance staff has to know that on the big rig, yeah.
I went there. I remember that hill. I just didn't know if we were stepping it down to use as additional, like because it's such a large area, that would be kind of a cool way to do a step garden. But I didn't know what that looked like yet.
I definitely think it's something that we can look at later. So get the wall in now and then see what, see what you could do with that space. I mean, you know, if eventually if it's less, less grass that has to be mowed and maintained, right? And it could be used for another purpose.
Right.
That's all the comments that I have for items 8.01 through 8.11.
Any other discussion points? Mrs. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
All right, now I would like to make a motion disapproving the TIF school compensation agreement for Quality Insight. Item 8.12.
I'll second. Discussion?
So I just want to start off by saying that even though we're disapproving the current TIF school compensation agreement as presented to us, in no way, shape, or form do I think the board is saying that we're saying no to the development project. You know, they came to us in August as our Treasurer Camp House mentioned to us, and we had quickly agreed to the monetary side of the compensation. And so after that, it's just getting the language parts right in the agreement that works not only for them, but then also offers the school district as much protection since the risk that we're taking is on the valuation of the property side over the length of the 30 years. And so just working out that last little bit of language that needs to be tweaked. What we're doing today is allowing us to ask for another 45 days and give us some time in order to get that language worked on. And I think that will be done, and I think we'll see this again back in our March meeting. But as it stands right now, you know, it's on our agenda to disapprove of current school compensation.
Anyone else? Mrs. Camp House?
Mr. Taylor? Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
And then finally, the last item that Mrs. Camp House mentioned was 8.03. This is the agreement for us to have our special counsel for all TIF financial matters. So we use Densmore for this purpose, and we just need to re-up it. So I'll make a motion that we approve 8.03.
I'll second. Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
All right, so that concludes the Finance Section. Item nine on the agenda is the Hearing of the Public, and we do not have anybody from the public here. So we will move on to Section 10, which is the Report Section. So item 10.01, Board Announcements. Anybody have any board announcements, Ms. Ballard?
Have some. First, I'd like to thank the Norwood Business Women's Association for donating $100 towards our fourth grade dance that we're going to be hosting for the ballroom thing that we talked about before. So they made a donation, we're going to provide some decorations and snacks and things for that when we stick people home. And we were also able to approve an extended budget of $200 to make a donation to our very own Hope Squad here. In addition to the other donations that they already do to our music programs and other various programs, they've now added Hope Squad to us, spent $200 this year. So that is really wonderful. The other news that I have, I did receive finally my state appointments. I was put on two committees. I got the Diversity and Equity Committee, and I also got moved to our flag committee as the ultimate representative for our congressional district, and that is the Federal Legislative Advocacy Group. So this is a national, or excuse me, national level. We get to go to, there's a state conference that airs later in the year. I'm looking forward to getting started about it. Any other board announcements?
So we do have a couple of announcements with sports. Do you have anything sports related?
Yes, but I don't know if it's the same, but it's into like the Winchester children and the bowling.
Bowling is awesome.
So I will stay away from that. But I do want to give a big congratulations to the girls varsity basketball team for making it as far as they did in the state tournament. Their last game went down to the final whistle against a 23-2 team from East Carolina. Yeah, and they could have won that game had things just bounced another way. I mean, but a huge congratulations to the girls' basketball team. And then also I would like to congratulate Abby Edwards, Ms. Woodmark, for breaking her own school record in 53 on the girl's side, and she did that at the section a couple of weeks ago. So congratulations, Miss Edwards.
Lots going on in the athletic department for people like I see posts from breaking records and the women's and batteries from anybody that's born. And much when I've seen posts on multiple platforms, some of those kids, like Abby, they're also silhouettes and their music programs and their athletes.
Very well-rounded.
Real well-rounded kids.
Yeah.
Any other board announcements?
North Little Indians, the Boncheer is, registrations are going on now. Early registrations are through the end of the month, so get your kiddos signed up.
All right, we will move on to 10.02. This is the Superintendent's Report. Turn it over to Mrs. Brennan.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to congratulate Ally Ava and Mason Winchester. They were profiled in The Inquirer. I still get a paper newspaper, so I couldn't believe it. When I opened it up, they got the whole half a page above the fold, which is truly impressive. And that's the picture that's up on the screen that was in The Inquirer. So that was just amazing. It's well-deserved recognition. Congratulations to all three and to their entire family because that was just fabulous to see. In addition, our bowling team was very excited. Apparently, the golden pin has returned to Norwood. They were, our team was playing against the team from Hackberry, which is Purcell Marion, and we have brought the golden pin back to Norwood. And actually, the Norwood Boys and Girls Bowling Team, they really have had a successful year. The Boys team has finished second in the Miami Valley Conference, and they've never finished lower than third. The Girls team has an OHSA Southwest District qualifier in each of the past two seasons. And so the program's success truly has been contagious. And our Boys team has earned a trip to the OHSA Southwest District Bowling Tournament. And congratulations to the coaches Nate and Teresa Hale for their hard work this year and lots of success. Chuck had wanted to have both teams to be our rising stars, but I said, no, let's feature them in my report because that would be too many children here. So thank you, and that concludes my report.
All right, item 10.03, this is the Great Oaks Report. I will turn it over to Ms. Ballard.
Thank you, Madam President.
Our sophomore visit report numbers came in. We had 3,474 students from all of our, at all four of our campuses come during our visits. Norwood had 34 students that attended of our 130 of the class. Let's see here, we have an upcoming Economic Forecast Breakfast that'll be held out in Claremont County coming up on March 9. And two of our students, Chris Delta, Martinez Garcia, won second place in the Public Service Division of Veterinary Assistant at the HOSA competition. And Carlos Veras Stegwi, I believe is the last name, got third place in pharmacology category versus surgical tech competition at HOSA. So congratulations to our two Norwood students there. And then next month, our meeting will be traveling to our Diamond Oaks campus. And my committee will actually be giving a report based on the diversity and equity work being done particularly on that campus. So they're coming to give a special presentation for that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Ballard. 10.04, this is Norwood Community Television. I do have a brief update. The Tuesday Club had their last meeting last week, and they finished two films that are still being edited. And the Monday Club is continuing to work on their second film of the year. All right, item 10.05, this is the OSBA Legislative Liaison. So Ms. Ballard?
Thank you, Madam President. The OSBA Southwest Regional Meeting was held the same night as our committee meeting. We did get a report from the new State Legislative Liaison, Nicole Piscatine. They were discussing district visits for 2023 as a Southwest region. They'd like to visit all of the regions in small clusters, and some might be individual visits. So the Southwest region might reach out to our district to comment for our building. The topic of discussion that Nicole mentioned the most was our delegate assembly for OSBA for Capitol Conference this fall. They would like to revamp the entire system so that it runs a bit more smoothly than it has the last couple of years. So that is definitely a very large part of our discussion that evening.
Oh, they didn't like how that went?
No, we just speak. They also mentioned being in opposition to Senate Bill 1, which involves reforms to the function and responsibilities of the State Board of Education. And in January, the governor signed House Bill 458 into law, which eliminates the August special election, unless it's needed for a special election for a House rep, or if a district is in fiscal emergency, they can still hold a special election. Government, or excuse me, the governor also announced a new budget, January 31st. We get a one-time use over a six-year window, $300 million for tech ed to expand CTE facilities, which will also help strengthen the Fair School Funding Plan by modifying the weighted funding to allocate for CTE funds separately from local schools, so we won't have to factor that in, which is wonderful for us. And and that concludes my report.
Item 10.06, this is Avenues for Success. Mrs. Erica clearly is not here. Does anybody have anything? I just jumped on their Facebook. Looks like they have some, some famous TikTok dancers working with a dance club. That's cool. And then it looks like to enroll in our Avenues for Success Elementary Summer Blast Camp. So if anybody's interested in that, there's a link on Facebook to check out that. Anybody elsewhere?
The only thing I heard was the summer.
Summer thing, okay, there we go. So the link avenuesforsuccess.net, if anybody wants to check that out or look up Avenues for Success on Facebook, and you will see that there. All right, number 11 on the agenda, this is Meeting Notifications. 11.01, Approval of Future Meetings. So the committee meeting will be Tuesday, March 7th at 6:00 p.m. at the board office. And our regular meeting will be Thursday, March 16th, 6:00 p.m. here in the high school mini. So do I have a motion to accept the future meeting dates as listed?
A motion to accept the dates.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, Mrs. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes. All right, with that, item 12, this is our adjournment. I would like to motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The time is 7:10, and we are adjourned. Thank you.